Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Lamson.
President. Ms. Hood, is there anything to report out?
The council convened in closed session on four items as noted on the agenda, but there is no reportable action.
Thank you very much. All right, please stand for the silent prayer and the flag slide. Vice Mayor Farmer, would you like to lead us in the flag?
Sure.
Thank you.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, would you please replay the statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, December 6th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, December 7th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you very much. All right, council, are there any agenda approval additions and/or deletions? Okay, on to presentations. We have the Lighting of the Night and Breakfast with Santa presentation. Parks and Recreation Department.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'll be calling up Jackie Garcia, our special events manager, to go over these events.
Okay. Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm excited to share with you and invite you to the upcoming Lighting of the Night this Saturday from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This year, we have continued our partnerships with the Galt Chamber of Commerce and SAC County Mofo to provide a great selection of delicious food trucks and an array of shop local vendors, including holiday decor and crafts. These items will be located in the Adventist Health parking lot. In addition, we have a full evening of musical holiday entertainment by local churches, schools, and city groups located at the Littleton Center. Once you have enjoyed the entertainment, we invite you to visit City Hall with a variety of family entertainment such as cookie decorating, photos with Santa, and the holiday arts and crafts, and some coloring sheets. To continue with the festivities, we have our tree lighting ceremony scheduled at 6:15, which is located off of Civic Drive, and approximately kicking off the parade following that at 6:30. This year, we have over 50 parade participants and hoping that the weather will hold off until after the event. This event is a rain or shine event and would only be canceled if there was extreme weather conditions such as high wind or lighting. And of course, this would be to the sole discretion of the chief of police. So again, we encourage you to visit this great event and take the time to stroll with your friends and families to enjoy a delicious dinner and holiday shopping. So move on to breakfast with Santa. Any questions on Lighting of the Night? This year, the Galt Market and the Hawks baseball team has partnered up to present Breakfast with Santa for the community. The ticket price ahead of time is $6, which will include pancakes, sausage, fruit, and juice, served by Santa's elves, and then holiday music, arts and crafts, and cookie decorating, and some other festivity cheer that we have. So again, we're encouraging the community to join as part of this event. It's a new event that we're offering and partnering with the Hawks baseball team.
So are the department aheads going to be the elves?
I don't know. We haven't asked yet. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Look forward to that public comment, please.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time the item is being considered.
Thank you. At this time, there's nothing for off the agenda, and then we'll ask as we go through the agenda. All right, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Sandu.
Nothing.
Councilmember Campion.
Nothing.
Councilmember Lozano.
Just, we have a Secog meeting next Thursday, a week from, so I think it's the 14th or 13th. I'll report back after that.
We had a youth commission meeting last night. I was just informed it might be on the website for Wednesday, so we might need to check that out. The youth commission had a kind of a workshop on the census, so they were trying to help with the census to count Galt in. The census is important because our federal taxes get to come back to Galt, about $2,000 per person. So everyone needs to be counted who is in Galt on that date. It doesn't matter. If you're here, we're counting you. So that was really what they're working on and getting out there. So if you see them out there at festivals and things, make sure you talk to them. And we had the Save Mart reopening that I attended, and all the CEOs and CFOs were there, and they were very excited to show off their new store and treat us all to some lovely snacks.
All right, information consent calendar. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes as submitted, receive and file warrants for the period ending November 20th, 2019?
So moved. Second.
All right, moved by Vice Mayor Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Campion. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. All right, scheduled matters, notice of public hearing, free fee revision plan, community development, building, and planning. I need to open, okay, we open the public hearing.
She's going to have a presentation first.
Sorry.
Don't sorry. Receive our pass.
Go for it.
Before you this evening, mayor and council and community is a consideration of increased fees for the community development area. These are the planning and building fees that have been reviewed for your consideration. As you know, the general, this is a continuation of the story about the general fund, which continues the strain of trying to meet public service needs with rising costs. In that effort, we've brought before council the last couple of months different items for education, and through the direction of council, we're bringing back certain fees. These are fees that the services benefit a private individual or company, and we should be charging a fair share of rate to those utilizing this fee. In addition to continued cost containment and reductions, these are some of the long-term efforts to provide financial sustainability. One of those, of course, is looking at fees, so this tonight is part of that effort. Last meeting, we looked at recreation fees. These are the community development fees. The overall targeted goal is a correction of about $1.4 million annually to make the general fund whole. So specifically about the community development fees, these were all reviewed by staff. Couple of things noted, there has kind of been lagging of some of these increases over time, and so this was really an opportunity to take a fresh look at these fees to determine if they needed to be realigned, and there are several on this listing that I'll show you in a minute that really need some improvement. This is a public hearing on these, and this has been publicly noticed twice in the month of November through our local paper. So this is a little small and hard to read, but let me just go through it briefly, and we can answer any questions. In the building division, there are several fees. We've only identified three here. These are permit extension, refund processing fee, and construction without permit. The recommended fee increases are listed there in the second column. The first column is really what was approved during the 1920 budget, and then the effective date for this increase, if approved, would be February 1st of next year. This next schedule is really about the planning division. There's quite a few listed here, application fees, design review, final maps and parcel maps, and a variety of fees included. Most of these are existing fees that need realignment. Again, if approved, these will all be effective February 1st of next year. I'm going to slow down just a little bit and see if we have any questions on this, on any of these fees specifically or in general.
Do you have detail on how we came to these numbers?
I'll defer to Mr. Rice.
Well, we did go through a review of the fees, and we looked at really the time spent on processing applications, and you know, the ones we have listed here, we felt needed to be increased to warrant the time and really process that those applications go through. So based on that analysis, we determined those fees that you see in your staff report, because I can't see that on the screen, I know that's too small, but that they did warrant an increase. And I think there, to me, there are three that really stand out as significant. One is a minor use permit planning commission review, and the initial fee, for example, for a minor use permit planning commission review, the current fee is $1,959, and we're recommending going to $6,337. Now, that is a significant increase, but the level of effort when a project goes to a planning commission is pretty significant. The amount of time for review, the amount of time for routing the application, and then the amount of work going into preparing for a planning commission far exceeded that current fee. So I think that other one, the current fee or the recommended fee is then warranted. And so examples of projects like that would be typically in a minor use permit, it could be a staff level review, but if it warrants a public hearing and a greater review, I can punt that to planning commission. And what I, there's a couple of minor uses that I typically will move to planning commission. One is telecommunications tower. Currently, it requires a minor use permit. I'll usually move that to planning commission, and that requires substantial work. So that current fee is pretty low. Another one that requires a minor use permit that is better served at a planning commission level is the use of shipping containers in some cases. So for example, we got a request to use shipping containers for a storage facility in the industrial zone, and based on the level of review and where I felt it needed to go, it should go to planning commission, but again, that current fee is not adequate. So that's kind of the analysis we went through. The other two that stand out are single-family standalone commercial industrial design review, which went from roughly $2,500 to $9,337, and that's pretty significant. But what that reflects is when we have an approved subdivision and then we have a design coming in for us to review, that requires extensive review, extensive consultation with other departments and other agencies, and then bringing it to planning commission. And again, that fee is, the current fee is just not sufficient.
So would that be for one house or a subdivision?
No, for a subdivision.
Okay.
No, one house.
A single house was misleading.
A single house would, is not even reflected in the increase. So the other one that's pretty significant is determination of similar use planning commission level. It went from zero to $6,337. So obviously, we just didn't have a fee structure for it, but because it is an application fee, I feel we should, I should put a fee structure to it. I haven't had that request yet, but I thought we should have that fee in case.
Chris, my question is, it went from zero to $6,337. So how long, so the last 10, 20 years, we are not charging any fees to anybody, and now just come up, we, your cost with your staff is comes up $6,337.
So.
Is something, just cost just increased this year, or something is fell in a crack?
I would say that's, the fact that there's currently no fee for that application, that it fell through the cracks, that it was just never identified, and it probably never came to light because we have not had that request recently. So had we had that request, we probably would have identified it earlier, but because we were going through this exercise here, I thought it would be prudent to put this on the fee schedule as we're doing this, just in case that would come along. So the requested fee of $6,337, again, is because of the planning commission review. When an item goes to planning commission, there is substantial work that goes into it from the staff level, not to mention then the resources that are put into it. So I feel that the requested fee is justified, and the fact that there was no fee for that currently, or there is no fee for it currently, is really just an oversight on the department's part. So apologize for that oversight, and we'll try to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Well, that fee would be, you know, it looks like the work effort would be similar to that of a use permit, a minor use permit.
Very true.
Because you have to go in through the same analysis, same type of report preparation and review. Is there a determination of use at the staff level?
There is.
There is. So that was the, that's what normally is done, but if it has to go to the commission, that is why this new fee is being established.
That is correct.
Okay.
And typically, I want to say, when we've had those issues come up in the past, we typically can handle it at the staff level. We can make a determination of similar use, but there could be an instance where we can't. And so we do have now a fee mechanism to bring that to planning commission.
And then one more question on site plan, review, commercial, and industrial. I believe I did talk to you, but I need just one clarification. It's increased from 27.88 to 60.337, and I totally understand when you make that 60.337, you put your staff time. Did you ever consider the other side, there is a different kind of developer? There is very small developers, sometimes they develop a quarter acre, and sometimes the developer develop a 20 acre. So there is any difference, and if you're going to use this one, I totally understand that, you know, the staff time, sometimes small project can be more than the bigger, but on the developer's side is not fair. One side, we're telling, okay, all the, most likely infill project is, can be small. So I do understand all the developer, they need to pay their fair share. But I'm, did you have any idea or consider if somebody in a infill come with a small site, site plan review, and it's, the staff can be a 60.337, or they can be, to attract the developer to do small project?
No, so there would not be any leeway for me to change the fee, that it would be the same for everybody. So if we have a commercial or industrial project, which is a staff level design review, that would be the fee regardless of size. I think you bring up a fair point about size differences. In general, I would say for planners, sometimes size doesn't matter, that the same type of work goes into a project. For us, you know, not all projects are created equal, and sometimes size may play a factor, but often completeness of application, how many times we have back and forth with the architect or engineer that's developing or processing the application probably plays a bigger role in how long it takes us. So we try to use general averages in how we come up with our time spent on projects. But you're correct, they are not all created equal. I mean, they, some could exceed, some not, but that fee would be the same for a half acre or for a 20 acre project.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, if I may. We're not even done with the presentation, though, are we? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. No, this is appropriate.
Are we good?
Place for questions.
So a couple of questions I have is, first of all, it says approved fee fiscal year 1920. When were the, when was the last times these fees were reviewed? And at what level of review were they? I understand there was some kind of study done in 2014?
I think you're correct. So 2014, 2015, there was a substantial review of the fee schedule. I don't think it just hit community development and building and planning. I think it was citywide. It was a little bit before my time in my current position, but I do recall participating in it at that time.
So was that the last time that we did anything with the, and at that time, does anybody in the room remember if it was determined that those fees covered, what percentage of cost it covered, or anything like that?
No, since that time, there has not been that type of review.
But at that time, do, does anybody remember whether or not the fees that were established based on that study, and what effect that had on the actual recovery of cost, like we're doing today, or we're proposing today?
So at that time, I would imagine that that was its goal, was full cost recovery, that, and it was a fairly intensive review of the fees. So for the time, that would have been appro, that's what they did. They reviewed for cost recovery, because the goal is to try to, you know, minimize the impact to, you know, the citizens and the general fund for paying for application processing. So I would believe that they had gone through that exercise at that time.
Okay. And you have a couple more questions, but I'll wait to hear from public comment.
I have a couple of questions, Chris. So you and I had a conversation about this on the phone yesterday, and I called, and I had indicated to you that I had, you know, did my homework, and I was looking at Lowdi and Elk Grove and trying to get an idea of fees and what they charge and stuff. So then I called and had you kind of break it down for me, because to be honest with you, I'm not that knowledgeable with this, so kind of relying on your expertise. So what you had told me is that, you know, my main concern that I expressed to you was, like Paul indicated, is that, you know, it's one thing to have a big developer come in and, and, you know, those people, we could say typically could afford it, but if you have a small person come in and he wants to do, you know, develop a small lot or something, and then to pay this, that was my concern that when we talked, and you had told me that contrary to what fee presentations have been given to us before, I thought this just came from finance, like, this is how much it costs, so this is how much we have to bump the fees up. But what I was looking for was not just cost recovery, but is this competitive in the market? Like, is this fair compared to, you know, other cities? Because I think that's just as important. So, you know, because I think this council over the last year has been very, we've worked hard to, you know, put programs in place to incentivize economic growth, you know, enticing businesses, and we've done the infill programs and things. So I just want to make sure, and I said this to you on the phone, I just want to make sure that what we're doing here is not going to be, you know, it's not going to undermine that. That's important, because I don't feel like I want to take two steps forward and then three steps backwards. So some of these fees are significant, and it jumped out at me. But as you told me on the phone, you were saying, I asked you for your expert opinion, being that this is your wheelhouse here, and you deal with these people, and you told me that the people that are going to see these fee increases are not going to balk at these fees, this, they're going to expect this. Is that not kind of what you told me?
Yes. So looking at the fees, I, we don't base our fees on what other cities charge. I mean, we have to look at the cost burden for the city, but I do like to look at other cities to kind of see where we fall. I mean, it's just for common knowledge. And Lowdi, you know, is pretty low. I mean, we're not going to be application-wise competitive.
You told me that, yeah.
But for Elk Grove, SAC County, we're competitive, if not better than those areas. But again, that is not how we base our fees. We base our fees on the burden to the city. But in general, I would say that these fees that we're increasing are really, they're new development fees. And so we are talking commercial development, for the most part, and use permits. What we've been seeing is an influx in drive-throughs and convenience marts. So you're typically talking about bigger players that come in and use that type of use and build that type of structure, and then also for subdivisions. So when you're talking about subdivisions and those type of commercial developers, you are talking about firms that, you know, are accustomed to paying this type of fee. But again, that, I hate to say that's why we increase them, we increase them again for cost recovery. But yes, in my opinion, it's not the application fees that give developers grief, it's usually the impact fees associated with the development, where if they're going to have grief, that's usually where it comes.
Just to clarify one of your questions. So the infill, Mr. Vice Mayor Farmer's talking about the infill, so this won't affect the infill program we have that gives people?
Those are for impacts.
No, in fact, the infill fee reduction program, what that has done is reduced the impact fees for traffic in the geographic area, and then also the park impact fees, and then we waived a policy document and recovery fee. So those are usually the fees where they pay for residential development on a per-unit basis. So those are where you really get kind of the pushback, but the application fees upfront, I've very rarely have gotten any pushback.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I think it's important also to note that in establishing these fees, and it's noted in the report, you know, this is supposed to be the estimated and reasonable cost for providing that service, and we can't charge more than that. Conversely, if you charge less, then the general taxpayer is then subsidizing new development, and I think that, you know, it's a balance, but I think you've tried, you have to try and, you know, look at who benefits most, and the individual with the application is the one who benefits most. So it makes sense to me that, you know, periodically, these fees be evaluated to make sure that we are at or near what cost recovery is. I believe even the general plan says that we are to do that as well.
Yeah, I think that just, and I agree, I just think what Paul and I were kind of just touching on is it just seems like there's some considerable jumps. Like, we felt like we missed some increments there, like, you know, we should have been maybe working, bringing these up, and instead, we're just like making a huge leap. But again, and I know, look, I know we're not trying to be like, we're not price shopping and be like, well, we need to be right here. I get it that we need to recoup our costs, but again, I want to stress that, you know, the way I conduct my business, maybe, you know, and say, well, I need to charge X amount for my product because it costs me to make that, well, maybe I'm not doing things efficiently as I should, maybe I should be redoing, you know, the way, rethink the way I do something so that I can be more competitive. But again, I'm not personally, my feeling, you know how I feel, Chris, I'm not, I'm not going to bend over backwards for residential development, because, you know, I'm not a big fan of fast growth. But I also don't want to undermine the things that we've done in the past with infill and smaller projects. You know, a guy wants to develop and he wants to, you know, build a car wash on a little quarter acre, and he's going to be like, ah, you know what, eh, nine grand, I'm going to think I'm going to look down the road. I just want to make sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot here, so.
Okay.
And with that, the recommendation before you is to approve these revisions both to the building division and the planning division to provide a basis to recoup the cost of some of these services that are performed.
Since we're having a public hearing, is there any public comment? No public comment? Do I, do we close it? All right. Public hearing is closed?
I have a comment. So I just, I just want to kind of put it out there where I'm at on this, and I've said this many times from, in public session and privately, I am not one to just increase fees just to increase. I am not one to just increase fees just to increase fees. I think government has a responsibility to live within their means. Having said that, this last year has been no fun. We were handed, you know, a situation where we are woefully underfunded in many areas for many reasons, one of which I personally believe is that decision-makers in the past haven't addressed that. And that's why I asked the question. If it says in the report that we approved it in 1920, when do we really implement that fee? And I think it goes back at least five years. And I suspect that maybe the fees that were established in 2014, when that study was done, that we did not establish the fee to fully recuperate the cost of doing that business. And so, I do believe that both commercial and residential development is important to the city. Certainly want to keep our small-town feel and do what we can to keep our community the way it is. But I think that we need to get into 2020 and start addressing some of these more long-term budget issues that we have. Now, we did the short-term. We are now looking at midterm issues and what we can do there, and then more long-term. And so, I think it's important that, whether it's commercial or residential development, that we, you know, we establish a standard and we go with it. These are huge jumps. I mean, I, they just are. And so, it's tough, a lot of this is tough for me to swallow. So, anyhow, those are my comments for now. I just, I think that unfortunately, we're going to continue to have to struggle with our issues and low, underfunded areas, so.
Kind of as a follow-up to that, then I think it may be worthwhile for council to consider requesting staff to bring these back on an annual basis, to ensure that there is, that they are kept up, that you don't see these big increases, you know, over a five-year period, and that, you know, they keep pace with what the true cost is. So, that may be something for council to consider.
They do, don't they? Chris, so the fiscal analysis on this is going to, it's expected to increase revenue of the general fund by $24,600. Is that, is that number, did you come up with that number based on past, how many?
Yeah, we're just trying to guess how many projects might.
Because, I mean, I mean, what you're talking about, that's like two, two fees, and that's 20, I mean, we're right there. That seems a little low.
Just a comment, that's for the current fiscal year. So, based on what we expect in activity in the current fiscal year between now and June, or between February and June, it's part of the factor.
So, to piggyback on what Rich was saying, look, me, I again, too, and I think my votes in the past have reflected it, that I'm not one to just go quick to raise fees. I fought against the, you know, the sports fees, and I just didn't feel that that was appropriate. But, you know, I know that we have to make adjustments. I mean, there has to be some give and take. I want to just throw this out there. I mean, I don't know if this is even something that's even viable, but is there any consideration to possibly, you know, doing this in a stepped increase over one year instead of right all the way up in February? Like, maybe kind of how we did, you guys did with the sports fees? I don't know if council, I don't even know if that's even something that's even. Tom?
The council could do that. I would recommend that you don't. I would recommend that you adopt the fees, because it fundamentally represents the cost of providing the service for each of these fee areas. And to either not raise the fee to where it should be, or to raise it only, say, 50% as much, simply then transfers the burden, the cost for private development, onto the general taxpayer. And that means that there's less general fund money for general fund services to members of the community.
Right. And that's what Chris kind of had to explain to me. That's why, you know, him and I had a long conversation about this. So, yeah, I do like Kurt's suggestion, too, that I think we need to visit this more often so that we're not looking at, you know, an increase of, you know, 100% or 500%, as I'm seeing some of the, yeah. So, I think we need to revisit this so often, so we're not, it's not such sticker shock.
Can we get a consensus on that? I agree.
For a motion.
We just need a consensus to revisit the fee schedule.
Yeah. What I would propose is that it become part and parcel to the budget process itself, to make sure that it's incorporated and that part of what the Community Development Department would do on an annual basis, when it is either developing its two-year budget, or at the mid-year point, it's evaluating those to see if there are any appropriate increases that should come forward. I have a quick question about that. We are here in the beginning of December. We're going to start budget process presumably after, just after the first of the year. Is what is being proposed going to take us through next year, or?
Certainly, I would think so, yes. That this analysis here would carry us through to budget. Then, when we get to budget, we throw, we hit it with the CPI. So, the cost of living increase will then push them up. But I would think that this would cover this next fiscal year.
Okay. I too. Again, I'll go back to you. You know, I believe we've done a lot to reduce some costs within our own organization, particularly in September, when we balanced the budget for the year. We still have more work to do, though. And so, I would, I would be in favor of moving this forward and reviewing it every year as well.
Okay, great. Councilmember Sandu? Yep, okay. Is there any more discussion? Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution making revisions to specific city fees for community development, building, and planning divisions as attached, and increase fiscal year 2019 to 2020 general fund revenue budget by $24,643?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Campion, second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. All right, moving on to the regular calendar, we have the Public Works Department, approval of the Transportation Development Act claim for fiscal years 2012 to 2013 through 2019 to 2020, and transit expenditure plan.
Good evening, Mayor, and fellow councilmembers. Yeah, I want to preface this by a little bit of background information. The Transportation Development Act is essentially has two key funding sources, primarily for transit purposes. And the first is the local transportation fund. This portion essentially pays for the ongoing operations and maintenance portions for those agencies that provide transit services. There's also a 2% piece that's meant for bike and pedestrian-type facilities and improvements. And then, the other source under the TDA is the State Transit Assistance Fund. And that fund is essentially meant for capital expenditures. And so, that's the two pieces that are basically make up this TDA item before you tonight. They are based on different sources. Essentially, the LTF is based on the portion of the sales tax proceeds from the state. And then, the STA portion is based on the excise fuel tax on diesel. And that's a lot more volatile than the sales tax portion. And that's the reason that that is typically used for capital rather than ongoing O and M. You want a stable funding source for the ongoing O and M. And then, you can plan your capital accordingly as the funds come in. So, as noted in the staff report, while the city has annually claimed the LTF share, it has not claimed the STA portion since FY 2011-12. And the reason for that is essentially, we were told by SECOG, who administers the apportionments for both of these funds, that we cannot carry a balance if we're not going to be spending it. And so, essentially, since that time, we've held off from claiming that, knowing that we're working on this transit facility. And so, now that we know we've been moving forward on the transit facility, we know we're going to be expending those funds in the coming probably year to two years or so, that we can now claim them. And we've had that conversation with SECOG, and they agree. And so, Mr. Carlos Solario and I are available to answer any further questions you may have. Thank you.
Council, any questions?
I just, I do. I just have a couple of questions. So, just for the public's edification, this is money that is earmarked to come to our community that we have not been able to claim, if you will, for several years, because we haven't had the ability or made the decision to spend the money that was already allotted to us for the transit facility, in part.
Yes.
Okay. And so, we have had several discussions about the transit facility in the last year, for that matter. And so, once, is it because we have a plan moving forward for the transit facility, and we're going to, we have a plan to expend that money, that we have the ability to reclaim? Or is it going to be determined when we start to spend that money? Does that make sense?
Yes, it's kind of, it's really kind of both. I think we definitely have a plan to spend it, and we also have a deadline from some of the funding that we got, other funding other than this. We did get some grant funding from SECOG also for a transit facility. And there is a deadline looming on that, as I think when we came to council back in March, and got direction from council at that time. So, we know that we've got this deadline, and we want to go ahead and claim this money so we can utilize it for the transit facility.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the same thing he was asking. My question is, from 2013 through 2019, we don't claim that money is supposed to come to the City of Galt, and we don't claim it, right?
Correct.
There is a particular reason, because when grant money comes in, you have to make a plan to spend it, right?
Right, yeah. So, this isn't grant money. This is a basically, you know, it's codified in statute, an apportionment to the city as a transit provider. However, it has to be spent essentially for capital. And so, not having any potential capital expenditure, that's the reason the city wasn't claiming it for those several years.
Okay. And when the city was not claiming, the city was aware of that, that money sits out there? Or there is something limit, so the money can go?
Rick, no, it basically stays SECOG. Like I said, they oversee the funding program and the apportionment, so it basically stays with them until we claim it.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Council, any more discussion? Let me read the whole thing. Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution approving the Transportation Development Act claim and expenditure plan for Transportation Development Act funds for fiscal years 2012 to 2013 through 2019 through 2020, to approving a budget adjustment to the transit budget, increasing local transportation revenue by $79,683, increasing state transit assistance revenue by $1,160,782, increasing appropriations in the operations budget by $21,536, and increasing appropriations in the transit operations maintenance center project budget, capital improvement project by $924,557, and authorizing the public works directors to submit, as needed, amended claim forms to the Sacramento Area Council of Governments SECOG for local transportation funds and state transit assistance funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Campion? Or was it Lozano? Councilmember Lozano? Sorry, couldn't hear after that. And seconded by Vice Mayor Farmer, roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Any communication in this?
No.
Okay. All right, we're going to adjourn Galt City Council and convene to the Galt Successor Agency. I took my hammer. Okay, roll call.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Here.
Councilmember Sandu?
Here.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Lamson?
Here. All right, is there any public comment? You're moving, no? Okay. Subject, successor agency warrants, approve the warrants as submitted, and the minutes. Do I have the right one? Oh, sorry. Accept the minutes as submitted, and approve the warrants as submitted. Like a standard calendar, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is this one supposed to be on there? No. Okay, roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Departmental, a resolution of the Successor Agency approving and adopting the recognized obligation payment schedule for July 2020 through June 2021. Ms. Tyson?
Good evening. Before you this evening is the annual review of the recognized obligation payment schedule. This is for next fiscal year 2021. This is a required action annually that is looked at and done by you, who are the Successor Agency Board. I have with me this evening Susie Kim from RGS, who is your expert in the redevelopment area in the successor agency. So, I'm going to let her say a few words about what's before you. But this is basically the annual review of your budget for successor agency, to say, these are the costs that we will incur during the year, and where that revenue will come from.
I'm Susie Kim with RSG, and I've been consulting the successor agency since, I believe, 2012. So, statewide redevelopment agencies dissolved in 2012 to solve a state budget crisis, and the city became the successor agency. And all successor agencies are required to adopt an annual payment schedule approving payment of former redevelopment agency obligations that existed prior to dissolution. So, tonight, the payment schedule has just over 2.2 million obligations. The majority of this is to repay bonds that were issued by the redevelopment agency prior to dissolution, as well as related fees for reporting. And then, there is also a small payment to a taxing agency that was implemented as part of the redevelopment plan adoption process, and as well as the $250,000 annual administrative allowance. And all of these obligations are paid for through former redevelopment project area property tax increment, which is a process that all former redevelopment agencies undertake to pay their obligations. With that, are there any questions?
I have a question. When is this going to end?
It ends when all the obligations are paid off, so essentially, when the bonds are paid off. And that, 2033, thank you.
33?
Mm-hmm.
And just a quick question. I know the answer, but everything that's in here on the payment schedule is required by the state, the action that the state took to, in the action the state took to take away the redevelopment agencies?
Yeah, so when redevelopment dissolved, legislation was passed that allowed all existing obligations obligations to be paid off, and these, the bonds are the biggest obligation which exist in.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any public comment? Any more discussion, counsel? So adopt a resolution approving and adopting the recognized obligation payment schedule for the period of July 2020 through June 2021, ROPS 2019-20 pursuant to the requirements of the Redevelopment Dissolution Act. I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Sandu?
Second. Rich, can I?
Second by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. All right, we now adjourn the Galt Successor Agency and reconvene to the Galt City Council. I don't think I've hit my hammer this many times in the whole year. All right, Clerk's Report. Sacramento, Yolo, Mosquito, and Vector Control District appointment.
All right, currently, there is a vacancy on the board of the Sacramento, Yolo, Mosquito, and Vector Control District due to the resignation of Frederick Guthell on March 20, 2019. The city clerk's office has posted the vacancy on social media and on the city's website. We received one application from Marcia Mooney. She is in the audience in case council has any questions, and this is a city council appointment.
I just read over your application. Your, it sounds like this was right up your alley, so I'm excited that you applied for it.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very interested in, in being part of the board, and again, representing the city since we haven't had a representative for a while. I think it's an important area that most people really don't know about. So thank you for those comments and for your consideration.
Good, we're hoping you'll keep us informed on what's going on, and
Absolutely.
We really, really appreciate you applying.
So do we have to make a motion to appoint?
Yeah.
Thank you for applying.
Thanks.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Marcia Mooney to the Sacramento, Yolo, Mosquito, and Vector Control District.
For the term ending December 2020.
Mayor, did you want to have any, ask for any public comment?
Is there any public comment? Okay. It's, nope. All right. Did, who made the, anybody make a?
I did.
Vice Mayor Farmer made the motion?
Also.
Councilmember Sandu, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Passes five zero. All right. Next up, we have the mayor and vice mayor appointments, and I just want to say a little something. I just wanted to take a moment and thank those who have supported this council, and me as your mayor for the past year. The council voted two years ago to make the office of mayor a one-year term so that other council members would be able to use their leadership skills and experience in this position. Thus, my term as mayor is over. I want to thank the people of Galt who have been so supportive of me over this past year as mayor and three years on council, as we have had some of the hardest decisions to make in years past to make sure that our city remains fiscally responsible and sustainable. And I want to thank the staff, department directors, and city employees for your support, and who make sure that Galt is a city that works for everyone. Your dedication and expertise are top-notch. I want to thank the council for their belief in my abilities and their support. This amazing council respects each other even when we disagree. I also want to thank all the nonprofit organizations and volunteers who make this city what it is. No matter the hours, or the controversies, or the reactions to things, Galt is a city worth working for. It's worth every minute of sacrifice and love, and I have done it with joy. I am so grateful to have had this opportunity. It will be one of the greatest honors of my lifetime. It's difficult to leave this seat, but I know that we will be in capable hands moving into 2020 and beyond, and I look forward to another productive year as a member on this council. Staying true to our values and working together, we have accomplished much over this past year and have much more to do. We need to continue to stay focused on the tasks at hand and make sure that the state of our city is strong and united. With the help of the council, the staff, the city employees, the nonprofits organization, and the citizens of Galt, we will continue to build this great American little city and leave it better and more prosperous than we found it. I'm grateful for the privilege you have bestowed on me, and have done my best to serve this city and this council as your mayor. Thank you again for your support this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Paige.
Thank you.
All right, so Ms. Hubert?
All right, this is for the mayor and vice mayor appointments, and I'm going to first turn it over to the city attorney to review the process.
Thank you. So yes, as Mayor Lamson noted, this is now an annual process. So the election of the mayor under your procedural rules is conducted by the city clerk, and the new mayor will then preside over the election of the vice mayor. Any member of the council may nominate any other council member, or you can nominate yourself. The nomination process does differ a little bit from your usual motion practice, so a second to the nomination is not required. So what happens is the city clerk will call for nominations. Once she opens the nominations, any council member, again, can make a nomination. You can appoint, you can nominate yourself. No second is required. And again, it differs here where the first council member, the nominations are voted on in the order in which they are received. So this is where it's a little different than your usual motion practice, where the last vote on the, the last motion on the floor goes first. So again, no second is required. The nominations, once we close the nominations, then we take the first nomination, and if that person receives a majority vote, that is the person that is selected as the mayor. The process ends there. If we do not get a majority vote on any of the nominations, we reopen the nominations and the process begins again. The same process is then followed once we have a mayor for the vice mayor. So unless you have any questions on that process, I will hand it back to the city clerk to open the nominations.
Any questions? All right, I will open the nominations.
I open, nominate Paul for mayor.
Paul Sandu? Okay, any other nominations?
Any other further nominations? I will close the nominations. I have a nomination for Paul Sandu. I take a motion by roll call vote. Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mayor Sandu?
Thank you, thank you.
Now, the next item is vice mayor.
I'd like to nominate Rich Lozano. Any other nominations?
Paul gets to.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
On the vice mayor, I'm going to open the vice mayor nomination.
Nominate.
I did, she did.
If you didn't, that...
Tina opens it, and then you just take it.
Nomination out there.
Yeah. Go ahead and close it.
And they don't call.
Okay, so nominations for Vice Mayor Lozano, so, mm... Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
So I would like to ask Paige if you can close the meeting today, then I will, I will take care of the next meeting.
Thank you, that's very nice. Okay, comments by staff? Let's see, Ms. Tyson, anything else?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Salim?
I just want to wish everybody a joyous Christmas season that's upon us, and we can all just remember, you know, goodwill toward our fellow men and women. Thank you.
Very nice. Mr. Rice?
Congratulations, Mayor Sandu and Vice Mayor Lozano on the appointments, and great job, former Mayor Lamson.
Do we do that? Actually, there was an email. No.
Ditto on those words. Just want to thank my staff for putting up our Christmas decorations. I know we had to do it a week early, just because there's so many that we have to get up. They did a great job, especially during this wind and rain, so just want to thank them.
Love those. Chief, you've been awfully quiet this evening.
There's, there's been a lot going on at this meeting, but nothing from me, except for that this weekend I can keep the parade going or not? Is that what I heard? That's cool. So last week you, you threw out, or last council meeting, you said, bring back all the dates of things that are going on. December's always a busy month for everyone. So with the police department, we have the Cars for Toy Rally at Station 44. So that is from 10 to 4, December 7. And then, of course, the Lighting of the Night Parade. And we have our Galt PD Award Ceremony. It's going to be at 3 o'clock on the 12th. The Toy Drive Giveaway at Station 44 from 10 to 2 is on December 15th. So, and then, of course, on January 15th, as always, we're going to have our Ton Memorial for our fallen officer, Kevin Ton, on January 15th.
Okay.
So those are the dates coming up. Congratulations, Mayor.
I might need those on the email. Okay. Mr. Haglund?
Congratulations to mayor and vice mayor and former mayor, and so look forward to continuing to work with you.
Kimberly, thanks for keeping us legal.
Just echo the congratulations to the mayor and the new vice mayor, and thank you, Mayor Lamson, and again, looking forward to the holidays. Thank you.
All right, comments by city council members and future agenda items. Councilmember Campion?
I have nothing. Congratulations to all.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of comments real quick. Thank you to the Parks and Rec staff for putting the, getting the lighting of the night stuff put together, and I know I've received a couple of emails this week about it. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for all the staff this whole year for doing all that you do. And, you know, it's, I think it's important that, and looking forward, we continue to do what we can to work well together and, and really support not only staff, but the community, as well as our own, our colleagues up here. So I want to thank Mayor Lamson for the last year of leadership. Well done. And I thank my colleagues for entrusting my ability to lead as vice mayor. And lastly, congratulations to Mayor Sandu. It's going to be a great year, and I think we'll do, continue to do a wonderful job.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, I want to first say congratulations, Paul, and congratulations, Rich. And thank you for allowing me to serve as the vice mayor last year. Move by really fast, so hopefully you guys will do well in those positions. I wanted to reiterate the toy drive that Chief talked about, the Cars for Kids. And so I think it'll be the third year we've done that, I believe, and it's been a great event. I know the weather's not supposed to be optimal for cars, but I want to tell people out there that are thinking about coming. TJ notified me that they're going to have the, the roll-up doors open on Station 44, so the cars will be able to pull in and drop off in the, in the dry. So I don't want to, hopefully that, the weather doesn't discourage people from coming out. It's a great cause. All the, all the toys go to Galt Kids specifically, unlike a lot of other toy drives that go on this time of year. This is just for, for Galt Kids. I want to thank TJ for spearheading this again. He does a great job rallying everybody together. I've been a little disconnected from the planning of it this year, but he, you know, picked up the slack in a big way, and, and he keeps it going. So please come out. As Chief said, it's at, on the Station 44, which is the old fire station on Guild Street, across rail tracks, it's at 10 o'clock, runs from 10 to 2. Can show up anytime during that time, drop off your toy, one toy, five, 10, whatever, but we appreciate you bringing something out. So that's all I have.
Wonderful. All right, we look forward to lighting of the night, rain, snow, sleet or hail, just no lightning, right?
High winds.
High winds.
We'll let the chief be the grinch on that one.
Yeah. Be the grinch, you got it, took me a minute. Good job. So I just want to thank everybody, and have a wonderful Merry Christmas, and there's a lot going on. We've got the community dinner. Hopefully, we'll get everything up on the calendar and keep track of each other, remind each other where to be. All right?
Did Paul want to say anything?
Paul? I forgot Paul. I'm going to give you this.
Okay, I would like to make a couple of comments. First of all, last week, I attended the beautification committee. I thank you for the beautification committee and also staff, their, their time to spend, and their also dedication to their job. And they, they're a cleanup day, they keep a city really clean. And I also like to thank you, that opportunity from all my council members, give me the opportunity to serve as a mayor, this small city, this small gray town. And the most important to me, I was elected as a unanimous vote. And that's my, and I'm looking to working with everybody, I'm looking to, looking at far better to working with all the, any staff. And I'm also be available anytime. I do not have another job. Anybody, any staff member need me, I will be 24/7. That's my promise for one year. Thank you, thank you very much.
Do you want to adjourn it?